Where is Rick?
Rick's away. Rick's in one of the islands. I don't know. It's a long island, the Martha's Vineyard. I'm not sure. Uh, meeting six forty-five will call a meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Second? Moved and seconded. Uh, any amendments to it, John?
Yes, with respect to, um, agenda item number three, I move to postpone and reschedule the executive session to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public official, employee, staff member, or individual on the situat housing authority until September fourth, two thousand and twelve at six forty-five. Uh, that's my first motion.
Uh, with that, we received a letter from Mary Ann Lewis. Please be advised that the project been met. I am unable to attend the select meeting this evening and respectfully request that the matter be continued to a mutually convenient date and time. So we'll postpone that to the fourth, and Mary Ann's been notified as such.
The fourth's our next meeting?
The fourth is our next meeting.
Right.
All right, so we won't-
Second on that, or?
We have second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, it's continued to the fourth. And the other one is the capacity number seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say I'd move to, I guess, withdraw agenda item number seven, which is a discussion vote award a contract concerning situat blue refuge, refuse bags, and indefinitely postpone on it.
Second? Second. Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. That was unanimous. It's now time for walk-in period. It's about ten, ten minutes early, so if anyone's coming in for walk-in, if they're here now, would be lovely to talk to you. Nobody, if anyone comes in later on, we'll just put them in, even though, okay? Because we are running ahead. Uh, the applicant for the water resource committee. How are you?
Hi.
Good. Would you mind just coming up and saying hello? Thank you for coming in, and if you just give us your name and a little background, that'd be great.
Sure. My name is Martha Cook. I've lived here about twenty-five years now, and I'm interested in protecting the water resources. I think one of the things I was surprised to learn when we first moved here was that, um, we had the tap water at our house tested because we had a baby, and, um, it wasn't very good. Over the years, I've learned a lot more about ecology and the environment, um, about water in particular, and I'm just concerned about trying to learn more about it and help guide the town in the right direction. Um, my husband and I both have volunteered for different things over the years, following schools, scouts, a variety of other boards. Um, so I was interested in this one.
Great. Any questions, comments?
Just comment. I know Martha, Dick, her husband, served on the advisory committee for, is it six years or three years? One of the two. I know he was chair for a year and did a great job. He did a ton with the Eagle Scouts and with the, with the scouts. I know their son was an Eagle Scout, um, and they're very active in the community, and, um, I think he'd do a great job.
I just thank you for stepping up to the plate, Martha. Go forward to it. Thank you. Well, you happen to be here. We, we have been asked to apply for a grant, uh, for, excuse me, for an award, and I, the, the award escapes me. I think it's a federal award, because of the work we've done with, with, uh, water quality and the return of Herringbrook and, and water conservation. So we're certainly moving in the right direction thanks to people like yourself, so, thank you. Motion? Uh, I guess we're gonna wait till the end of the meeting.
Looks pretty good, though. I think-
All right. Thank you, Martha. Item number six. Discussion, vote, outdoor entertainment permit, military friends. I don't see them here yet. Um, so why don't we just hold off on that? Seven is being postponed. How about, uh, someone getting L? Kim, thank you. This is discussion vote, award DPW contracts of vehicles. Good thing you didn't go home for dinner.
I thought, uh, I actually, looking at your agenda, I thought that we would be on a little later, so I apologize for being around the corner.
Okay, a couple of things are postponed, so we just-
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good. This is, uh, you have a revised sheet from me.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Uh, we are here to request that the board of selectmen award contracts for the purchase of vehicles for the Department of Public Works and for the Police Department. These are capital purchases that were authorized at the April town meeting. And I'll explain why I'm here on behalf of the DPW and the police force in just a minute. Uh, we, the DPW is standardizing the vehicles that we purchase as much as possible so that we can maintain parts inventories, do the maintenance ourselves, get the right manuals and that sort of thing. Uh, so we are, this year, purchasing the following vehicles, or recommending that we purchase the following vehicles, uh, which would be Chevrolet pickup trucks fitted for the various departments. Of course, the water department has different requirements for the, um, the back of the truck than, than does the sewer department or the highway department, but we're able to purchase all of those Chevrolet trucks from the Plymouth County Commissioners' contract, a group bid done by the Plymouth County Commissioners. Uh, the dump truck is from Mass state contract, lawn mowing equipment from Toro is from another Mass contract, and the hot box is from the Greater Boston Police Council contract. Since both the Police Department and the DPW are authorized to purchase a Ford Explorer this year, we, we worked together to solicit competitive bids for these two units, and as a result of buying the two units, we were able to get a better price than from the state contract, and so that's why we're here tonight on behalf of the Police Department who did, did the research on this. With the exception of the hot box, all the equipment that's been, that's being purchased replaces obsolete equipment that will be taken off the road, so we're not adding to the fleet. We're simply replacing the older vehicles. Uh, all of these purchases went through the rigorous, uh, circumspection this winter by the capital planning committee, the advisory committee, yourselves, and our town administrator to make sure that we're buying just what we need. These purchases are all funded from either available cash, free cash, or retained earnings.
Just to be clear on that, and they passed the town meeting, so this isn't free cash right now. This is, this is what we allocated as a capital plan through free cash that got passed at the last town meeting.
That's correct.
So these are all approved, all voted on by the town, and really, this is the last stage of purchasing.
Right, and we're coming to you because we need to award a contract to a specific vendor for a specific purpose, purchase.
Over twenty-five thousand, so, at the meeting on September fourth, you're actually gonna have a policy proposal. This has already been through town meeting, capital planning, advisory, you folks, meeting, and yet his, you know, so these kind of things, I've been asking the board's authority that over certain twenty-five thousand thresholds that this can just go through, so we don't get locked into a board.
What's the hot box? Al, what's the hot box?
A hot box is a, um, a heated box into which one puts asphalt. You go to the plant, pick up the asphalt, it keeps it warm so that throughout the day, as you're using it on potholes or repairing sidewalk sections or other parts of the road, the, the asphalt stays at the correct temperature, so when it's put down then, it adheres.
Gotcha.
Speaking of asphalt, let's have-
Further explanation. It's, I think it's some place that's putting soft patch down. Soft patch was just a, is a temporary patch. This is a way of, if you've ever seen those infrared pieces of equipment that'll come down, they lay down, they'll heat up the street, and then they're able to excavate it. It's just a better job when they're doing a patch. I think that's a fair assumption. Can I just ask one other question?
Sure.
Uh, I was just looking down the list. I don't think we own a Dodge in the whole town. Why would you get, is that, is it a bargain deal?
That's interesting. Good question. Um, because the Chevrolet equipment is not, um, let's see, I forget why.
Kevin's just walked in. Maybe he can answer that.
There's a very specific reason why we're buying the Dodge.
I think it's turbo, and it's for some reason, pulling stuff so they can pull the trailer.
Yeah.
All right, good.
I could be guessing. It was something to do with the trailer. I talked to one of the mechanics about it.
Yeah.
Is it Ramtuff? Is it Ramtuff?
I don't know. They got a reason for it because we were trying to stick to all the same vehicle.
I just didn't-
They got a reason. He might have been towing or something, showing a bigger engine. I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. I'll speak, just before, speaking of hot top and paving, Beaver Dam Road and First Parish, we got a couple of questions on that recently.
Yes, um, I think we actually, we are finished this week with what's called raising the structures or, or adjusting all of the outer kilter, manhole covers and sewer covers and that sort of thing, and then next week we begin paving. We're actually very early on the paving schedule this year. We made a strategic decision early to line up all of the vendors. Even though the chapter ninety money wasn't approved, we got in the queue early with the grinder and then the paver so that we could be first out of the box. So, uh, unlike previous years, you know, we're, we're kind of pushing November before paving. This year, we're going to have the paving done. We're targeting to have it done before school starts.
So next week, you think-
I believe so.
Hopefully.
We're in the queue.
A motion?
Sure. Move the board of selectmen vote to award the following contracts for the vehicles and equipment. The purchase of two Chevrolet pickup trucks for highway and grounds from Liberty Chevrolet of Wakefield, Massachusetts for a total price of sixty thousand, seventy dollars.
Second. Do it all individually or all together, Trish?
Yeah, we have separate.
Separate, good.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous?
Oh, aye. I'm sorry. Looking at my next motion here. Sorry. Uh, move the board of selectmen vote to award the following contract, um, vehicles and equipment for the purchase of a Chevrolet pickup truck for the sewer enterprise from Liberty Chevrolet of Wakefield, Mass for a total price of thirty thousand, thirty-five dollars.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Four, nothing.
Move the board of selectmen, uh, to purchase a Chevrolet utility body pickup truck for the water enterprise from Liberty Chevrolet of Wakefield, Massachusetts for a total price of thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Four, nothing.
For, uh, move the board of selectmen, um, to purchase a one-ton Dodge dump truck from Central Dodge of Norwood, Mass for a total price of fifty-three thousand, eight-hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Uh, move the board of selectmen, uh, purchase, um, a Toro Grandmaster gang mower from Turf Products of Enfield, Connecticut, I think, yeah, C-N, Connecticut, uh, for a total price of eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Second?
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Move the board of selectmen, uh, to purchase a trailer mount three-cubic yard hot box from Minuteman Trucks of Walpole, Mass for a total price of thirty-nine thousand, five-hundred dollars.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Finally, I move the board of selectmen to vote, uh, the purchase of two Ford Explorers from Stonemotor Company of Stonem, Mass for a total price of fifty-one thousand, nine-hundred and eighty dollars.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
No, thanks.
Laura's on her way in to discuss flood grants higher reimbursement amounts. There is nothing else really quick that we could deal with, I don't think, unless you want to make the appointment to the Water Resource Committee.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Move, what numbers?
Number thirteen.
Move Martha Cook as the next, um, committee member to the Water Resource Committee.
Second?
Uh, motion's been made and seconded from Martha Cook. Further discussion from the floor, from the board?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Now, I'm sure there's nothing. I just, well, let me take up some other business now myself. Under the other business, while we're waiting for Laura, agenda item, if the board doesn't mind, I'll just bring them up now. I attended, uh, opiate addiction meeting last night at Pier Forty-four. I attended, probably close to a hundred people, eighty to a hundred people. Florence Cho more or less ran it. A panel of experts were brought in, talking about opiate abuse and, and not only with, with, uh, young people, but also with old people who, who it's becoming a, a larger and larger problem, and, uh, it was just well-attended. It was a great meeting, and, and if they have it again, I think it would behoove anyone to go there, so.
Yeah, that group's doing a great job.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, I mean, Emery and that group are, they've had a couple. You've been to two or three.
Couple of them, yes, yeah, and they did a great job. It's, it's, you know, if, without editorializing on it, if you're a parent in town, uh, you should try to make every effort to go to one of these meetings because it's, it's eye-opening, to say the least. Having said that, Laura, under that happy note.
Oh, thank you.
If you'd come in and thank, tell us about the reimbursement.
The, um, you know, the town has this elevation grant program, which I know, you know, we've, you know, I, I know I've talked about with you all before, and since I got involved with it, there've been, there's, there's one main, uh, level of reimbursement that's been used, and that was forty thousand to reimburse people for a portion of the cost of elevations. What's happened over the years is that cost has really gone up with the cost of fuel getting so expensive and materials and everything else, and it's now costing people about, oh, I'd say a hundred thousand dollars is common to elevate a house, and it's often quite a bit more than that. So I met with the elevation grants committee, which has Dave Ball, who's the head of that coastal council that includes all the beach associations and Rosemary Doby and also Doris Querry, and we talked about whether it would be a good idea to ask for the maximum that we can really ask for from FEMA, and that would reimburse people for seventy-five percent instead of just, you know, forty or fifty thousand, and they thought that was a good idea, and the next step was to ask you all to, you know, to bless that or to, to vote it so that we can have that be the official amount that we're asking for.
Tony?
So, if I understand this correctly, the, the town arbitrarily picked forty or fifty thousand dollars to ask for reimbursement in the past, when we could have maybe asked for more?
Well, what happened in the past was there was a defined pot of money, and if we kept the amount that each homeowner was getting, you know, set at a certain amount, then we could spread it among more people.
I see.
Um, but that's changed. It's, it's not done that way anymore.
There's a bigger bucket of money to, to draw from?
Yeah.
And this is obviously all federal money. None of this is town money.
Right.
So this is all just getting, getting reimbursed from FEMA for repair work that people are doing to their houses in the floodbowl.
Right.
Sean?
Is there any downside? This is, this is great. I've read it over, and I, this is a home run to those people that, you know, are, that haven't done it yet. Is there, is there a downside to it? Why wouldn't you? This is, this is great.
Well, I don't think there's really a downside, um.
Okay.
All right. Further discussion from the floor?
Motion.
Motion, please.
Will the board of selectmen vote to support an increase to seventy-five percent from FEMA elevation grant reimbursement, further recommendations of the flood grant committee?
Second?
Motion's been made and has been seconded.
Just one other question. This document that's with us, Laura, this is just our guidelines that we give people that come in here and want to apply for the grant?
That's right.
And we're just changing this one line on it from forty to fifty thousand dollars to seventy-five percent?
That's right.
Thank you. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Laura, thank you for bringing that to us. That's a, as Sean said, a win-win, it looks like, so.
Hope so.
Hopefully. All right. Stay right where you are. I think, Laura, we'll talk about zoning bylaw, village business overlay district. Agenda item number ten.
I think Bill Limbacher is coming down to, um, join me for that, but I'm not sure if he's gonna get here before you, you end, because I think he was, we thought the meeting was gonna be a little bit longer, so I don't know if you want me to try to get him here earlier, or?
Well.
Go for eleven? Yep, could go for eleven.
All right, do eleven first. The board's agreement? All right, do eleven first. Is that all right?
Okay, um, this is another item that I think you're basically familiar with. It's the settlement agreement where the town was going after the funds from the performance bond to get Walnut Tree Hill completed, and after a lot of work by, um, a lot of different people, we finally have the document. The amount that the contractor is getting paid is about eight-hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's going to cover fixing the problems in Garrison Drive, fixing some problems with Greenbrier Way. Um, there's a water easement that has some bad erosion problems in it that's kind of a long stretch of, of land, and that will get fixed also. And then there's some little odds and ends of, of construction work that need to be fixed throughout the whole subdivision. So this is gonna help, um, as far as getting that subdivision closer to getting the streets accepted. It's, I don't think it's all that has to be done, but it's one step in that direction, and, um, I think you have a letter from town council-
We do.
-about this.
It's been a long time coming, and, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But-
Agreed.
It appears to be here, from the board.
Sure. Uh, just so that everybody understands, the bond that was put forward was a bond that the contractor, the developer who actually built this subdivision, had to put up in order to complete the project, and that's what the bond's for, correct?
Right.
All right. So in other words, what the town did was, due to their failure to complete a lot of the work for the build-out, if you will, of the roadways, the town ended up on behalf of the homeowners to go out and go after the bond to seek reimbursement in order to complete much of the items that we're talking about here tonight. It's not in full completion, though, right? That's what you're indicating.
Right.
So, just so people understand, this is not town money. It's money that's actually, we're getting from a bond that the developer put up that ended up leaving. The developer, I think, was Modern Continental, I think, who ended up going bankrupt or, or moving on. But the long and short of it is, is that this is items that people have been trying to get completed. The performance bond was put up. The town now has stepped in to make sure that most of those items are, or a lot of the items are getting completed to help those people in those neighborhoods so that ultimately down the road, those streets can be accepted as public ways. They're not right now, but if the people on those streets decide to do so, then in the future, that's a consideration the board will take in, right?
Right.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah, um, there's been a ton of meetings on this. I've been, and obviously you've done a ton of work on this project. My, my question is, are the citizens of that area who are very knowledgeable on the needs and all this sort of stuff, are they on board with the work that's gonna be done, or is there still a discrepancy in terms of what, what the bond is actually gonna pay for repairs and what additional stuff has to be done for repairs?
I think we've, we've worked out as much as we possibly could have. There are one or two people that probably are not gonna be completely satisfied. There's one person who has some damage in her driveway, and the problem with, with this money is it really wasn't intended to cover a driveway. It was really just intended to cover the road. So, you know, there're gonna be a few situations like that. There was someone else who was very concerned that after drainage was put in, that their landscaping might be affected and so on, and I did check with town, I actually even talked to him about it today to make sure that there's enough language in there that says that they have to restore everything to its, you know, pre-construction condition, and there is, so, at least in his opinion there is. So, um, so that should help with that. Um, yeah, so I think that's basically it.
The big-ticket items, all of them, particularly the street at the two entrances, are included. Back in the woodway there where that erosion occurred, that's been taken care of. Were there any other big-
Yeah, that's, that's under, that's under this to be taken care of.
Were there any other sticking issues that, you know, major ones that aren't being, I mean, you said some of them aren't being dealt with. Are they more the, the, the things you just discussed, or are there any other bigger issues that haven't been addressed in this?
Well, the only reason I said that, you know, I think this isn't gonna go all the way towards the street acceptance is that I think the town has some pretty high standards about the road condition, you know, throughout the whole subdivision, and there may be some work on those roads that needs to be done, um, just because of the normal wear and tear, not because the developer didn't do their job. I mean, what we're doing is getting money because the developer really either left things incomplete or things failed, you know, roads failed that shouldn't have after such a short time. So we're getting, you know, additional drainage put in and, um, getting those things addressed.
But when do you think the work will be completed?
Oh, um, I think they hope to have it done by the, you know, by the end of the fall.
So as soon as we sign this, the insurance company will, will fund it. None of it is coming from the town's money. It's all coming from the insurance bond, as John mentioned, and they're paying the contractor to do the eight-hundred thousand dollars of the work on the roadways.
Right. They have hired a contractor. It's, um, someone named Bosworth out of Braintree, and he's gonna be paid through, uh, Travelers, um, and it, it's not gonna go directly through the town, but the town is gonna sign off before he gets paid.
And it's definitely gonna start this fall?
Yes.
Right. Good job. You put a ton of work into it, so I'm glad we're moving forward to its completion.
Yeah.
Just to take what Tony's concerned, it's just a step further. The only thing that jumped out with me, Laura, was the easement, and is that particular person, if there's anyone involved, on board with that? I mean, I don't see why anyone'd have a problem fixing the road, and I understand the driveway that's getting on a private property, but you, you don't suppose that will be a problem?
We haven't heard anything about that, and it's, it's way back behind people's property that, yeah, some of them think it's gonna be-
All right, right. Good. That, that was it. Yeah, the sooner the better.
Motion?
Uh, just, just going forward, and I realize, um, and this is not directed directly at the planning board, but obviously, this was passed at some point in the past, probably in the late nineties or something, or in the early two thousands, this project, um, in supervision and making sure and maintaining that they were putting what they're putting, should have been putting down. Do we have any plan as a town going forward for some form of like, I don't wanna say enforcement, but inspection to ensure that future developments such as this actually get made the way that they were represented before town boards, in this case, the planning board and conservation and other boards?
I would have to say I think we do. We're using consulting engineers now to do a lot of the inspections because the town staff doesn't always have the time to go out there. So the same engineer that reviewed the plans for us, either he or somebody in his company is coming out and actually doing the inspections. So I, I think we're, we're a lot more on top of that than we used to be.
I'm only asking that because obviously, I'm, I'm sure if I were sitting at, in, at home watching this or the news wanted to report, the question I have is, how do we prevent this from happening going forward? Because we have to expend time, your time, other people's time, to fix something that frankly, we never should have had to have done in the first place, but for what had happened, and frankly, I'm glad we did because it was, um, necessary, but I just think people, and that we, including yourself, we need to make sure that that prevents, things like this are prevented, and I'm glad to hear that, you know, that's, that's the push to, to try to resolve going forward, having consultants. Thanks.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Motion?
Motion, please.
All right. Move the board of selectmen, uh, vote to approve, uh, the sum of four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from the state, I'm sorry. What's wrong, what?
Eight twenty.
Eight.
Actually, it says it's unknown at this time, but I-
It's unknown.
It's eight-
I need you an update.
Yeah, there's an update here.
I got it. Want me to do it, Sean?
Yeah.
Move the board of selectmen vote to approve and execute the tri-party completion and settlement agreement for the performance and completion of outstanding work in the so-called Walnut Tree subdivision in accordance with the terms and conditions contained therein. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion from the floor, from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Mr. Limbacher's here. Bill, why don't you come up? We're waiting for you.
And again, Laura, good job on that. That was, the town really hadn't gone through that process before in terms of actually playing this intermediary between the insurance company and a subdivision of a, like John said, a bankrupt developer. So it was all new territory, and it took a lot longer than I think anyone wanted, but I'm glad we got it, you know, completed finally.
I bet it's not an emotional issue.
Going back to agenda item number ten, a vote, uh, on a zoning by- Going back to agenda item number ten, a vote, uh, on a zoning bylaw, village business overlay district. Who, Bill or Laura, whatever?
My turn, I guess.
Your turn.
Sorry I missed the discussion on the, on the settlement, on it. What we've done is, is, as you well know, we, we created the vis, the Village Business Overlay District, and we've come back up, we went through the, all the public hearing processes, it was voted by town, town meeting, we then went through bylaw review, it was re-voted again by town meeting. What we found was, is that, um, there's a sentence that was, that's in the original, bylaw, it says where dimensional requirements are not specified, construction must meet the requirements of the underlying zoning district. What we found is the fact that it, that limits us to, to making the bylaw virtually unusable because the, the, if the underlying zoning doesn't change, then in effect, we're unable to come back up and increase the density and the benefits of creating the residence and the, the retail. So, what we've done is, we worked with Neil, we came back up and worked with the board, and came back out, and what we've done is, we've modified, uh, this sentence, uh, and I think you've got the language, it says, uh, the old man takes his glasses off to read, frontage requirements in the underlying zoning districts may be reduced by a vote of the planning board, as long as the existing frontage is determined to be adequate to provide access for the vehicle or traffic expected to be generated by the site. Will require review by a traffic engineer or similar qualified professional prior to making this determination. Then it says, in all other cases, dimensional requirements not specified will meet the requirements of the underlying zoning. So, what this does, this gives the planning board the opportunity to look at the site, specifically at the site, alter the frontage to come back up as, and make sure that it's safe vehicle, for vehicle traffic, and then come back up and encourage it. And I think that's something that we, I think we really need to do, is to come back up and create spaces for small businesses within the town. So, that's, that's the reason for the change, and that's the language of the change. Fair assessment? Thank you.
What you're asking us to do is to refer this proposal that you're presenting, refer it back to you, to present to a special town meeting?
Yes.
Discussion from the board?
Just gives you more flexibility to.
More flexibility, and it, and in that flexibility, I think it gives us the opportunity to really tailor that, the opportunity that that site presents, okay, to both the applicant and, and particularly to the town in terms of ultimate use.
Good, I, I like that, yeah, great.
Further discussion from the floor, from the board?
So, we'll just discuss this again when you actually bring it before us on the warrant, but.
I mean, it's, it's, it's in addition to a, a change to a bylaw, which is, you know, it's a pretty standard process for us.
Right. Right, one motion?
Please, somebody, John?
Move the board of selectmen vote to refer a proposed, uh, a zoning bylaw change article, mixed-use building slash village business overlay district to the planning board for their review and recommendation, and further that space be reserved on the special town meeting warrant for this article.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go back to agenda item number six, the, uh, outdoor entertainment per, uh, permit for Military Friends Foundation. Thank you for coming tonight, again. How are you?
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you very much for having us, appreciate it.
Yeah, we're proud to have, we're happy to have you. Uh, you're looking for an entertainment license?
That is correct.
How did, uh, Peggity Beach parking lot work out, all right?
I, we're, we're hoping the tides will work in our favor for the timing of the event, and, uh, we have, uh, hopefully some wonderful activities for families and run participants that will take place there. We're still seeking some logistics.
Have you checked the tides?
Um, I believe that we're looking good right now, I've been asking some of your local Situate residents to give us more advice.
Yeah, I, the tides can be a problem down there, I would suggest, depending upon when high tide is. If high tide is at the same time that you're planning to have runners or participants there, you want to, want to make sure you're far away from the beach, shall we say, as far away as you can be.
Okay.
Because it's pretty, I mean, it's only a couple weeks away, doesn't the tide move an hour a day about?
You can just look at a tide chart.
Yeah, I don't have a tide chart here.
Then if it's a full, it's only if it's a full moon, right?
No, it's Peggity Beach is.
Does it?
Yeah, it was full, like, today, I think.
All right.
Or yesterday, I remember, so.
What time is today?
But you can just look ahead.
I'm not sure what time I drove by.
I think it's just really the location that you put the stuff, but it's pretty easy to figure out.
We're hoping to have tables for families to be able to eat, as well as food, um, and possibly a tent, depending on weather.
Check on the tide, it's the only thing that jumps out at me anyways.
Okay, very good.
And it's set for September eighth?
It is. We would anticipate that the earliest runners would start, um, approaching Peggity Beach, probably at eleven AM. And so, we were looking to, um, you know, we had discussed having vendors, um, or, excuse me, um, some of the, um, setup done, you know, the evening before, once the beach visitors were cleared, and posting a guard there, and then earlier in the morning, but then all of it would be immediately cleared.
How long is the run?
The run itself is a five K.
Okay, and you have squatters of, of people, of signs directing people on the route?
We've worked very closely with, uh, the police department and Sergeant Gilmarten to make sure that everything, um, for safety purposes, as well as for efficiency, to make sure the roads can reopen fully as efficiently as possible.
And how many runners do you anticipate?
Um, I believe that the permit we put in was for four hundred, I'm, I recall that off the top of my head, it may have been for four fifty.
Yeah.
Uh, we're very excited to have, I think, tonight, I'd have to check, but at least last week, uh, just over two hundred and fifty people registered.
Wow, great, great.
So, it's been wonderful support from the community.
Great, great.
And there are more than a hundred individual families who've lost service members coming out to Situate.
Yeah.
Um, and many of them have multiple people within that family, if they're not registered for the run, who will be along the side of the road.
Yeah, great, great. Discussion from the board?
Just one quick question, you said you're going to set up the night before and post a guard?
That was what was recommended, um, one of the, I think, in the letter, in one of the attachments, and I wanted to bring you in, sort of a larger version, which is closer to the size of, um, what Run for the Fallen do. This is a example of one of a hundred and eighty-five tribute markers that families of the fallen have designed, and, uh, these markers would be on a coroplast-type material, similar to, uh, political signs, um, just the opposite direction, um, and on very streamlined H-frame metal posts that would go in and out, um, and hopefully design not to damage any landscaping. And so, we had discussed, um, with the police department about setting those up the night before because of the time that it takes, um, both at the start and the end of the run, and ensuring that they're protected with, um, a military guard or some other volunteer that we have, that will just be there to watch over them.
Motion?
Please.
Move the board of selectmen vote to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to the Massachusetts Run for the Fallen on Saturday, September eighth, two thousand and twelve, at Lawson Park, for opening ceremonies for a DJ playing patriotic music from eight AM to ten thirty AM. Immediate butters must be notified in advance of this event by the applicant.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Ann, before we vote?
Ann, remind, what streets will be impacted?
What streets? We will find that out right now. Uh, do you have the route?
I do, and I can try to pull it from memory, but I have it in my binder, um, I believe we'll start at the common.
Yeah.
Um, go down First Parish Road.
Yeah.
Take a right onto Stockbridge.
Yep.
A left onto Greenfield?
Greenfield.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, is there a ridge, a left onto Ridge, onto Kent?
No, Ridge Hill.
Ridge Hill, excuse me, a left onto Ridge Hill, on, then a left onto Kent, a right onto Edward Foster, and then straight up, which I think turns into Beach Street?
I can't even do.
Um, okay, so straight up the hill and then down around.
Oh, you're going to go up the hill and down the hill?
Right, so I think Edward Foster, there's a small road in between that has a different name, before it hits a right onto Peggity Beach Road, going down towards the beach.
Are they going to go up Edward Foster, and they're going to go straight up?
Yeah, I think it does bear left slightly, and then hook on to.
Down the right, wrong, okay, and you have squatters there or someone there to direct the runners?
That's correct.
Ann?
Perfect, I was just concerned about the road race in more Situate, and none of the businesses were notified that this was going to happen. And so, it's, it's my main trust of communication, so it's nice to know that this group will have no impact other than on the post office.
It'll have no impact other than the post office.
The post office and the gas station.
And the gas station.
Thank you.
As far as businesses are concerned.
And only one, the street won't be closed, it'll just be one lane closed, so.
That's correct.
And the police will be directing traffic on the other.
And we have a team of volunteers coming out per a permitting application this weekend that will individually notify all of the residents and businesses along the way, as well as invite them, um, to an event on the twenty-eighth here, next to Town Hall, uh, where we'll be donating flags to anyone in your community who wants to come out and either hold them or decorate their front lawn if they're along the route, and hopefully educate them a little bit about, uh, the event itself.
And that's on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, that's on the twenty-eighth, from four thirty to seven PM, and there'll be complimentary pizza and, um, drinks.
That's August twenty-eighth?
That is August twenty.
August twenty, okay, great.
So, where, where are you setting that up? Because I don't think we, we knew about that, is that?
Um, I believe it's actually next to the, I said Behind Town Hall, but I think it will be somewhere in between outside by the police station, um, and Behind Town Hall, in an area that allows for parking and safe access. I know we've been working on the details with the police department, so I don't know the specific placement of the tables, but we can definitely let you know.
Yeah, let, let the.
I mean, I'd love for residents to come out and be part of that, we're excited about that.
I just wanted to say one thing, you know what, it's a great race, I really hope you get four hundred plus, and you know what, if it means that people have to stop and wait two or three minutes for cars to go by, whether it's getting to a post office or a gas station, it's at least we can do. You know what, I, I really wish you guys well in the, the race, and, uh, so, it's a great cause.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion on this in a second, before we go on, I know this was your first run at this, and it's, it's, it's mind-boggling how much work has to go into it, et cetera, from not only the town's point of view, but also yours. I think, you know, next year, coming back, you'll probably be that much more ahead of the curve, shall we say?
We hope so.
Yeah, you know, you'll have a lot of it, uh, you've learned a lot from this year, and, uh, it'll be much easier for you, you know, you know, you'll know exactly, you won't, you won't be changing it as you go along, you know, and if it works this year, it's pretty much rubber stamping for next year, you know, so, it's good. Uh, motion?
We already did it.
Just got to hold on it, and then we're going to do the second.
Do we have a vote on it? We need to vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another motion?
Another one.
Move the board of selectmen vote to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to the Massachusetts Run for the Fallen on Saturday, September eighth, two thousand and twelve, at the Peggity Beach parking lot, for a band playing music from eleven forty-five to one fifteen PM, eleven, excuse me, eleven forty-five AM to one fifteen PM. Immediate butters must be notified in advance of this event by the applicant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, discussion, I was going to suggest before you leave, even if somebody can Google, find Town Hall, find the high tide on September eighth, it might be beneficial to you. Uh, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck with it.
Thank you, gentlemen, um, I have one other quick question, if possible.
Go ahead.
Uh, thanks to the generosity of, uh, state legislators and the Massachusetts Military Division, they are considering a flyover to recognize the fallen service members, um, that would take place, uh, over the beach area at the conclusion of the run. Uh, we will not receive official notice whether that will happen, possibly up until a few days before the event. If that were to happen, is there any paperwork that we can anticipate or permitting that we would need to present you or the town with, so that families and?
Turn that over to the town administrator, I don't think so, I don't think we have anything to do with that.
Now, they, they have every right to fly over, the government.
We just wanted to double-check with you to make sure that we weren't missing anything.
Email the town so we can get it on the town's website.
Sure.
And I think the press, you know, depending on the days, if they can get it in the paper.
If they want it to land, that might be a problem, but.
Just for future, something to consider in the future, realizing this is your first go at it, if you will, but if you're thinking of doing it again next year, you might think about trying to, uh, do it in conjunction, possibly, and, but with, um, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, you know, even if the Fourth of July might be too hot, but at least, you know, there'll be more pe, not more people, but, you know, it'll turn to a bigger event, I think, given if you package it.
Yeah, thank you.
Just, just to promote it better for you.
We'd like that.
We have a motion?
Already did it?
We did it? We already voted it, thank you, good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Do we vote, we already voted? Yeah. Uh, earlier we mentioned that we'd go back to walk-in, if anyone came in after, looking for a seven o'clock walk-in, is there anyone here for walk-in? Seeing none, thank you.
Twelve.
Twelve. Discussion vote, short-term, short-term borrowing for the fiscal year thirteen capital projects, Tricia?
Uh, yeah, the memo on the packet from me is indicating that, um, several of our FY thirteen capital projects that were approved at the April Town Meeting are ready to be purchased, and so, we need cash. So, this is something Jane, our former treasure collector, typically came in to do with you, I learned quite a lot about it in the last two weeks. Uh, we did, uh, submit the outstanding information to Bond Council to get the green light letter, which we need to have in place before we do any borrowing, there was quite a bit of information, um, that needed to be submitted that Jane had worked on, and I, I picked up the, the last tail end. So, this, um, reflects a six-month cash flow for mostly school bus and the school technology. I would say that's almost, uh, eighty percent of it, and a, a slight contingency. So, um, we filed this vote over the board with DOR, and then we replenish it, uh, we're anticipating, hopefully, still being able to float the bond in November.
So, we're just borrowing it from ourselves until we get the funding.
Yep.
Motion?
Please.
Move the board of selectmen vote to approve the sum of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the stabilization fund to be used for fiscal year thirteen capital projects, as permitted by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Uh, buh, 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 I think, I think we've done it all.
Except other business.
Except other business, other business, who wants to start?
I'll start.
You want to start?
Um, just to let everybody know, um, Labor Day Parade down in Sand Hills is going to be held on Sunday, uh, September second, it's, uh, an event that's been going on for almost eighty years, actually, it's been long, eighty-plus years. Parade event, it's a very, um, folksy parade, it's, uh, people put floats in, kids, um, march in, put their bicycles, but it's a, it's a really fun event, and it really makes our town unique in that, um, we have this type of parade, so I highly encourage people, if you haven't been, go to it, starts around twelve o'clock, down in Sand Hills, for September second. to it. Starts around 12 o'clock down in Sand Hills, for September 2nd. The other one I wanted to say was that I noticed that, um, acknowledge Lieutenant Prosecutor John Rooney, who apparently has announced his retirement, uh, or his intention to retire after 11 years, um, with the Boston Police Department, for 28 years with Situate Police Department. On a personal level, I've dealt with Lieutenant Rooney, uh, prior to becoming a Board of Selectmen. I have to say, he is a phenomenal, uh, police prosecutor, and represents the town very well. And, um, I've seen him, well, even when I've been on the board, although not, you know, been in the courtroom, and I've seen how he's handled things, and complete, 100% professional, and he does, um, an excellent job representing the town's interests and doing the right thing. And I, I just wanted to say congratulations to him, because I do notice what he does, and, um, I, this town has been well served by him. We'll miss him, so.
The board shares your, shares your thoughts on that, I know.
That's it?
That's it?
Uh, I was just going to say one thing. I believe it might be Zach's last night.
I was thinking that. Is that Zach?
I thought you were gone. I was like, oh, man.
No, Zach. Glad you brought that up, Sean.
And just, just, just thank him and, and wish him well.
Zach's on his way to Harvard. Good for you.
Congratulations.
That's right.
Stop in every now and then.
[laughing].
That was all, Joe. That was it.
Tony?
Yeah, um, the only thing I wanted to, uh, mention is that, uh, we've been getting some emails lately regarding the beaches and how the life, uh, the lifeguarding is stopping. And I know it's posted on the website, but certain beaches probably don't have guarding anymore, and in fact, they're probably all done by the end of this week, maybe Labor Day at the latest. So, before you go to the beach, um, please check the website and make sure that, um, that it's guarded, if you're expecting it to be guarded. I think, is mine at the last one?
I believe.
Uh, Humorak?
Peggydy is the last one.
Peggydy is the last one.
I can look at the numbers if you want.
Uh, it's on the website. I mean, people can find it, if, um, but just again, beware. Thank, they, they did a great job again this year, and, um, unfortunately, they go back to college, and now we, uh, you know, they're not, they're not guarded for the last couple weeks of August, some of them.
Thank you. And under other business, the Course Foundation is, is sponsoring their, their, uh, loser training wheels program this week at the Gate School, where, uh, special needs, uh, kids come in who, with different degrees of ability, as far as riding bikes, some have never been able to ride a bike. And through a week of, of sessions, uh, with volunteers and with the people who run this program, it's miraculous at the end of the week to see the, the change in, in these kids', uh, ability to ride bikes, and more important, the change in their confidence in themselves. They come in on a Monday, and they, they, uh, are nervous, as, as we might imagine, uh, to get, even get on a bike, and by Friday, they're, 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 no training wheels, they're on their own. It's just, it's just, uh, another one of those things that, if you're in the vicinity of the Gate School any day this week, from 8:30 till about 2:00, drop by, and it'll be a great experience for you. Lastly, the board has sent a letter up to the, to all the residents of Humorak. I believe every resident, not only those residents, have signed the petition, uh, a week or two ago to us, but to all residents of Humorak, outlining the town's position on the bonfires, and as well as the town's position on the events of July 3rd. That letter is, uh, on the website. Uh, we invite anyone to read it. In our quest for openness, we wanted to make sure that everybody, uh, is aware of it, so it's on the website. Read it. It's a good letter. Okay?
Just one thing, Joe, that you mentioned about cords. Um, I just want to say that you're absolutely right. It's, this is something that is unique. I think it's like, either one or second in the state that has this program, and you, you think that we'd have this type of program with, uh, kids with disabilities to be able to have a, an ability to go out and try to figure out how to ride. And, and Course has been, I think this is the second year or third, they're doing it here in our town. I mean, that, that just is amazing, and, um, you're absolutely right about the confidence of the things. Um, I, I know that firsthand from my nephew, who went through a program in New York State, and I have to tell you, it does bring everything you just said.
Yep.
So, um, people should understand that. And it's another good reason that everybody should be patting themselves on the back, because you live in such a great town, so.
Yeah, great. Uh, I don't have anything else, Tony?
Just one last thing. I, this flyer here. Um, on August 31st, the Situate DVW is having the Situate DVW Day on the front lawn of Town Hall. Um, it looks like they're going to have a bunch of vehicles here, the, the large equipment that, uh, the town uses out there for kids to kind of climb on and, and, uh, and get used in, in play with and what have you. I don't think they'll be able to drive it, but, um, there'll be a loader, a street sweeper, a backhoe, a dump truck, a bucket truck, and all sorts of equipment.
Yeah, we get special insurance for that.
Around for them to come and, uh, and experience. So, again, August 31st, from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. at Town Hall Front Lawn.
Thank you. Uh, I think we've covered, we've jumped around a little bit, but I think we've covered every item. Uh, number 15 is executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation of the legal matter of the Zoning Board of Appeals versus Harrybrook Meadow LLC and Mass Housing Appeals Committee. So, we'll be going to executive session for that, and we'll need a motion.
So, move?
Move. Are we returning back into regular session, and that are just adjourned from